Okay, this is Chairman Mike McCoo, Wellington Board of Finance, calling the meeting to order at 7:08 PM. All regular members are present. We don't need to see alternates. For approval of minutes, we do not have minutes yet from the previous meeting. I'm working with our secretary to get them finished up. And we'll talk more about this later in the meeting. Our current secretary, Marissa, is going to be leaving, serving our board. Her work schedule has become too demanding, which is why she's been late, and she now gets leaves for work at four in the morning. She's just not going to be able to continue with us, so we'll address that more later. Next is present to speak. We have a large amount of people attending the meeting tonight. I'm assuming that will affect present to speak, so. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Because we'll be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. One thing I would like to emphasize tonight, as we're learning to use the hybrid meeting model. Keep in mind, we have five people in this room here, plus all of you out there, so please be patient with trying to avoid talking over each other. And if anyone has, you know, a question or whatever, just please keep your hand up long enough for us to see you and be patient. We will try to make sure we get to everybody. So if you are currently using a camera, and so your video is showing to us, would you please raise your hand if you want to do present to speak? And we'll call on you one at a time. Lori Semperban.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for all your time. I know this is going to be a long meeting. I just would encourage the Board of Finance to finally approve the allocation for the billing committee, so the billing committee can move forward. And we can make progress on this. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. More people who are in camera, and give us a minute because we're looking at two screens full of people here. If you're on camera, please wave your hand, or use your raise hand feature. Michelle Cunningham.
Hi, Michelle Cunningham, 41 Lisker Road. I want to second what Lori Semperban said. I think that the points that you made at the last meeting have been heard. And I think that the point's made, and it's now a chance to move ahead on something that the people in Wellington have already voted to support. And we'd like to see you release that funding to the school building committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in camera? Kirsty Farrar?
I just wanted to ditto what has already been said, that we can't expect the committee to do its job if they can't be funded, and experts don't work for free. So we really need to release this money so that we can move forward here.
Anne Groschen.
Seeing something different from what I'm seeing. Okay.
Yeah, I'm using, I'm using one screen here and one screen.
Got it.
Okay, sorry, I'm unmuted now. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. As a member of the school building committee, I would really like you to, to encourage you to allocate the $100,000 so that we can hire a owner's project manager, which will help us to move forward on both of the ideas, on the renovation, as well as constructing a new school, so that we can, we can fully explore both of those possibilities with an owner's project manager. We also would need access to money for architects and engineers. I think it's also very important that the money is released in a full block, because every time we ask for some money, it will need to go to the selectmen. They only meet a couple, once, twice a month, and then it would need to go to a public vote. Not only would that become cumbersome for our residents to go to, keep going to public votes, but it will also cost the town quite a bit. So I really encourage you tonight to allocate that $100,000, which has already been approved by our town residents, so that we can move forward with the school building project. Thank you very much.
Sarah Baker. Sarah, we're not hearing you. You, it says unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Okay, anybody else in video right now? We wait for, while we wait for Sarah to get connected. Not seeing anyone else waiting there. Catherine Viveros.
Hi, Mike, how you doing? So I assume that the Board of Finance has the revised language for the school building committee request for funding, but I'm going to read it, just in case there are members on the phone that may not have it out front of them. So in listening, in, in listening.
Catherine, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
This is an agenda item, so I'd like to have you speak, since you are the chair of the committee, I'd like to have you speak during the agenda item. You, you can speak in present to speak, but agenda, I think your place would be better during the agenda item.
Okay, can I at least say what everybody else said? I encourage you to consider the revised language, and I can talk more about it when it's on the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Baker, would you like to try again?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, great, thanks. Sorry about that. Yeah, so thank you all, and thanks. I appreciate the time you all spent working and being good stewards of our finances. And thanks also to Phil for sending out that really painfully detailed timeline of the roof project. It does often feel like Groundhog Day, I think, for those of us who aren't in the, in the weeds. And, but that was really helpful. But really, I'm here to talk about the appropriation for the school committee. You know, the town voted on a budget, which includes, you know, $100,000 to the school committee for consultants. I would ask that this committee do as we have asked, do as we have approved, and release them the money that we have decided is appropriate for them to have for these consultants. It does not need to be any more complicated or bureaucratic than that. It's not the purpose of this board to micromanage the work of other committees and other boards. A fund for new versus remote, I think, is unnecessary, unwieldy. They will likely have consultants. You can very well imagine that will be doing work on, on both. And so please just release them the money so they can move forward with this work. The, the more delays we have, the more it will eventually cost our town, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, more, any more present to speak in video? Wave your hand, please. Okay, so let's go to people who are not showing a video feed. People who are on computers or phones. Try unmuting and, oh, I see Peter Latencich now. Go ahead, here. You're muted.
My apologies for not waving efficiently. Peter Latencich, 97 Trask, Trask Road. I would like to second my colleagues on the school building committee that I serve with, that it's important that we have funds to function with. At the same time, I also want to stress that we don't wish to work at cross purposes with the Board of Finance, or Board of Selectmen, or any other board in town, that we wish to work in a cooperative fashion. Harping about the inefficiency of town meetings, and that it's cumbersome to go to the Board of Finance are unfortunate. These checks and balances help us all gain the trust of the townspeople, and not be dismissed merely because, you know, we're enthusiastic about our particular project or another board with a project they may be pursuing. So I, I want, I want to stress that it's, we want the Board of Finance to do its job, so we can do our job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so those of you who are not showing a video feed, as I was saying before, people can unmute and call out their name. Just be careful, because we may have more than one, and we will make sure to get to everybody. Last call during present to speak. Do I hear somebody calling in? If you would like to speak in present to speak, please unmute and call out your name.
Hi, Kylie Foltz here. I would just like to reiterate almost everything that Sarah Baker said. I think it's really important that we get the information that we need, and that we not be held up with the Board of Finance in political decisions that have already been made. The funds have already been appropriated, and let's, let's get the information before we go further into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? I see a raised hand. Melissa McKinnon.
Hi, yes, Melissa McKinnon, 63 Lushawn Road. I want to echo exactly everything that Sarah Baker and Groschen, Kylie because this money has been appropriated, and the town voted on it, which is seems like it should be appropriated by you guys to the school building committee. We know that no one works for free, and there's so much information that they have to get, that it costs them money. And I trust the school board committee will make the right decisions once they get that money to use it appropriately. So I hope that you guys will give them the money that was approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other present to speak? I think we've got everybody there. Okay, let's move on to the agenda item, old business. I've had a request for us to move Public Works, item five, to the beginning of old business. If there's no objection, I'd like to get Troy out of here. He has another commitment to get to. Okay, so item five on the agenda is Board of Finance, letter to Public Works, retrieves and storm damage. Just a little background on that. I was not chairing the previous meeting. Our vice chair was, and he provided me with language for the letter that this group had wanted sent, asking for information. I got it a little bit late, and then I didn't handle it right away. I was coming back from vacation, so there wasn't time to get it to Troy in time. However, because he was already on it, working with the Board of Selectmen, he does have a report for us. I just want board members to understand that letter didn't go to him yet. But we are getting a report on both items that were concerned, which was the trees and the storm damage. So with that, Troy, if you're ready, you're on.
Mike, can you hear me okay? Okay, so I can give you a brief overall, like I gave the selectmen's. I can do a rundown, or I can tell you the exact amount, what we've spent so far. We're still getting, you know, we're still using asphalt every day. We still need to put process on the dirt roads. Well, how would you like that, Mike? What would you like to give me the overall price, or run by what material we've used?
Why don't you give us, give us the overall, and then we'll see what questions there are.
Okay, so as of right now, I've used $127,052 this year so far repairing the roads. That doesn't include asphalt slips, probably in the last few weeks. I did contact Haynes Material. They said they were trying to get them out to me today, but unfortunately, it didn't happen. We're currently buying asphalt pretty much every day. So that number will, you know, eventually go up once I get all the slips, but currently, right now, that is the grand total.
And this is for damage from how many of these storms?
From, it started from July, the storm on July 17th, and then it went down from every rainstorm we've had so far.
I believe Troy, it was, it began a week before, when we had damage on Lisker Road, July 17th of the Mason Road.
Yes.
Most of July.
So what was that number? Because I just found my, my sheet paper. Was that 122,000?
Well, that was actually, it was 127,052.
You, that's, yeah, thank you.
That's the update. And I still haven't received some slips from Haynes Material for the asphalt we've purchased in the last week or so.
And Troy, this is a material cost, right? Gravel and asphalt. This is not, like, you're not separating out the labor into this number for those events?
No, I don't. I do have a spreadsheet, Mike, that I can probably give to you, that was, for each road, basically, what was spent on it. But labor costs, no, that was added all into that number for the Knights trucking, Haynes trucking, the contractor on Mason Road to redo that culvert. So that's pretty much, that's all ballpark figure of everything combined.
That's, that's materials you're buying, plus that's material and work by vendors.
Yes, correct.
Okay, but you're not tracking your own staff's labor separate for this?
No, no, I'm not, no.
Okay, would we, if we're going to go for any reimbursements, would we need to do that, or would you deal with that later if the reimbursements came available?
I don't believe there's going to be any reimbursements available, but that would have to be broken down, you know, with labor costs.
Okay, you can go, you can go back after that later. Okay, the laugh was about our lights going out, not you, Troy.
Mike, just to clarify, were you saying, and Troy, were you saying that the contractor and, and labor by vendors is not included in the 127,000?
No, it is included.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it's included.
So currently, the bulk of the storm damage we had did not, has not qualified for FEMA. There was not enough damage across the state. It was pretty isolated in nature, which is why Troy has tracked individually yet his budget. I'll, I'll share what Troy shared with the Board of Selectmen on Monday, and so the number you originally, I shared with your board was information shared last week with the Board of Selectmen. And he's given you a current to date. But we had asked Troy specifically for dollars he spent on Mason Road, which had significant damage on both ends. And as of September 8th, to date, he had used $54,629 on just Mason Road alone.
So half of it.
We, we put about 1,000 tons of three-inch gravel on Mason Road, and that didn't include the process, which hasn't been fully processed yet.
Board member questions for Troy? Do we need to make budget adjustments for this part?
Well, currently, I've taken it out of my, you know, asphalt budget, out of my regular general budget that I have. Do any chip seal this year due to the fact that the roads, that we're going to get chip sealed, were damaged. We didn't have time to prep some of the roads due to the fact, so I still have my chip seal money that we're still using. I've used my asphalt money, basically. So now I'm using the chip seal asphalt, that line item to, you know, to correct some of the issues still. So as of right now, I'm okay with my budget, but this is, if something, if we have a bad winter or another huge major storm, I'm going to have to come back to you guys to look for more money to appropriate that.
Erica?
One of the things Troy talked to the Board of Selectmen about was what he just shared with you, that chip sealing did not get done this year. It was too full, the damage we had, and then the amount of rain we had put vendors behind overall. So Troy had talked about potentially doing this year's chip sealing in the spring, but at this point, he's used the bulk of that funding for this. So if we were to move forward to do chip sealing in the spring, in this current budget, we would most likely have to come back to you for more funds.
That was my question.
You're welcome.
Any other board member questions about the storm damage? Were we, were we expecting some update on the tree situation also?
I'm sorry, before you move on, though, could, do you have any figure in your mind, Troy, about what it would cost if we did go ahead with chip sealing in the spring?
Currently, I've had a quote, well, from them, was about 147,000. 10,000 of that was the school parking lots that would not come out of my budget. That was, I believe, a CIP project. I believe that was approved. So I think it was roughly about 137, 138,000. I don't have that exact number in front of me, but that was what was, that was about.
Close enough, thank you.
Okay, on to the tree situation.
Okay, so I'll just give a brief overview, overview on that. In the month of July, we removed 88 hazardous trees. 72 of them were ash trees. On the following roads, Moose Meadow, Blair, Marsh, Deauville School, Eldridge, and Marco. In August, oh, sorry, let me go back. The total budget for the month of July was $35,280 for the month of July. In August, we removed 56 hazardous trees, 42 of them were ash, Deauville Depot, Cowells, Jarrett Sparks, Mason, and the total budget was 16,000. Year to date, we've spent $51,280, and I just had Lyndon come in to remove a couple other trees that were pretty in bad shape, and they'll be getting another bill for about $3,000 on top of what I've spent so far. This has basically.
$50,000.
Right, $50,000 budgeted, and we've already spent $51,000.
That is correct.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, the normal budget here is 25,000. Troy came to us and asked for much more, and his budget was 50,000. He had warned us that we could spend upwards of a couple hundred thousand.
Troy, at some point, our board got a, a letter saying that there was approximately 200 and something, was 250 trees that were, needed to be taken down.
It was roughly about 200 trees, you know, but still driving around on my daily routines, I mean, I still, I have a list of trees I still need to come down. The more and more you keep looking, they're all, it's just not the ash trees. It's, there's oak trees that are split. There's, you see it as you drive, and I stop along, and I make notes for the roads that, you know, and try to prioritize which trees are going to come down first, and what money we have to do it.
And, and I, I would guess that some of those trees need to come down this year.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yep.
And Troy, the running count now is like 144 trees are down?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Troy while we're on this? Okay, thank you, Troy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item one on old business, public health crisis update. Do we have anything new on this? I haven't seen unemployment numbers.
They did not come out. I, they started discussing them. I heard them talking about them on the news today, so in typical fashion, probably tomorrow morning, and I will share that with you. I believe we are still around six point between, I don't put way, it, 6% is over 6% last month, or for July, so August numbers may still be somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay. On the ARPA funding, I understand the Board of Selectmen is setting up a committee to review requests. Is that in action?
Our first meeting will be on Monday.
Okay. Can I back up just one spot to the public health crisis?
Yeah, we're in.
Are, are our numbers up or down right now?
Our numbers are up.
Our numbers are up, because last time, we heard seven and down.
Oh, so I can't tell you how many are currently active. That would determine how many are sick. I can tell you, since I last reported on September 8th, Kelsey and I looked at this afternoon, and we were up 12 cases in the last week. So we are not yet in the red. If we go back to the color-coded alert levels that the state was using, we are in the orange level, so certainly cause for concern. We're seeing a rise every day. Mr. Stevens may or may not choose to speak about the effect in school, but like all of our neighboring towns, we're seeing increases.
Mr. Stevens, do you want to add anything to that about the current COVID situation?
Door, yeah, we've, we're seeing the same thing. We've seen the increase, so we started, I reported on the, the Tuesday of the board meeting. We had been in school for eight days and had three cases in school, and we've quarantined over 20, 20 people between staff and students. So the virus is out there, and, you know, we're doing everything we can to stay open.
I would, you know, we have not moved to put in a mask mandate in town. That is something the governor's executive order has given the authority to the first selectman in town. We have not taken that step, but I want to encourage people, you know, so that, before we take that step to wear a mask, think outside themselves, and consider being vaccinated. Our vaccination numbers are about 59%. Yes, we are well under the state average.
Go ahead.
I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, so I read in the Wall Street Journal, day before yesterday, there was an article on American Rescue Funds, and I guess we're calling it HARP. And the contention was, or the, the article was about the prohibition on cutting spending, or excuse me, tax rebates or cutting taxes. So apparently, that law prohibits the states from cutting taxes, using the money to cut taxes. It does not prohibit towns from cutting taxes. Apparently, we can use that money to cut taxes. We're a town, not, not the state. So I would be interested if our town attorney has any information on that, if that's true. I mean, I, one article is not enough to go on, but it's something to think about.
If I can speak to that, I don't have the language of the interim final rule in front of me, but there are only two or three things that the funds cannot be used for, and one is to cause a tax.
Yeah, I'll forward, I'll forward the Wall Street Journal article to the members of the committee.
For you to read the interim final rule. I believe I shared that with you as a representative of the Board of Finance.
Yes, I, I read it. Yes, I read it. Yes, I read that. And I'll forward the, the Wall Street Journal article to the members of the committee.
Who is the interim final ruling issued by?
The Treasury.
Okay, so the Wall Street information is interesting, but following instructions from the Treasury. Okay, anything else in public health crisis update? I am hoping, I'm seeing some of our local businesses starting to pack up their outdoor dining because of the season is changing. It seems like all the restaurants are doing fairly well, from what I'm seeing, attending them as far as attendance. Particularly Hilltop, with the huge outdoor area, has been pretty busy, especially in good weather days, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping our businesses that are open right now and doing okay, continue to do okay. And I don't know if we have any information from the businesses that are still suffering. But I do know that, for example, Hilltop has been trying to hire. They've had a lot of turnover, and so I guess it's a good sign that they're looking for employees.
I think the one chief complaint I've heard from small businesses and restaurants, particularly in Wellington and surrounding towns, is they can't find enough employees. So not as though they're hiring extra, but they're really, they're all struggling as an industry to maintain staffing. So while we're trying our best to support them, they're struggling with little staff, and I know that has affected some of their ability to do business.
Okay, anything else on item one? All right, let's go to item two, school building committee consultant funds appropriation. I will first just say, as the Board of Finance's representative to the school building committee, I attended the meeting last night. We discussed a lot of the concerns that have been raised in the past about this request for allocation. And after a lengthy discussion, did come up with modified wording that the school building committee hopes is resolve some of the concerns, but it still allows the school building committee to have the working space they feel is necessary to do this efficiently. Chief among those changes is addressing the addressing the fact that in the, in the committee meeting and in the presentation by the consulting firm that they saw how the consulting firm could work to satisfy both of the major pathways that the committee might take, one pathway being the renovation pathway, which could be renovate one school, renovate two schools, renovate the other school. It's just, it's renovation, and then the other pathway would be new construction. So that came, all of that led to that committee presenting new language for the request tonight. It was emailed to the board members this afternoon. And if I figure out how to do the screen share in a second here, I will put it up on the screen. So.
One moment.
Well, that's the, okay, that's the one right there. Stand by everybody. There we go. And, okay. So the language you see in the lower half, the bold language, it's partially in black font and red font. That was, that entire paragraph is the revised language. There are two revisions, the red area is new, and then up in the black area, you'll also notice that the last line in the black area has added in the comment, reserve fund to project four oh four one. So that further, that clarifies where the money's coming, is going to. And then Catherine, would you like to speak as board chairman for that, committee chairman?
Sorry, yes. Yes, I would, I, I just wanted to express that, you know, I'd like you guys to consider, the board to consider, I'm sorry. You know, the revised language here, I, I did listen to the comments from the last Board of Finance meeting. There were some valid comments from both positions regarding supporting it as originally submitted. And also, you know, with, with the idea of having a little more description and concern about the consultants looking at both options or many options. And so that's what triggered the, the, this added paragraph to, you know, define that the funds will be utilized to hire consultants to assist the committee, the school building committee, with the review of multiple options. I know in the last Board of Finance meeting, there was a discussion about just two options. And, you know, I hate to limit our, our building committee with just looking at two options. We also have other needs regarding hiring consultants that are not specific to just those two options. For example, recording secretary and also hiring someone to do our, our new projections for the town. And so I, I hope you'll consider this revised language and allow us to, to get some traction on this building committee. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you Catherine, board Stephanie?
Yeah, Catherine, I, I was dialed in last night and I believe that was a, that your wording met with a unanimous vote by the committee. Is that right?
I believe so. I have to look back at my notes, but I, I believe so.
Other board member comments, questions, discussion? Yes. Yes, Pete Tanaka.
I, I very much like to thank you, thank, thank the building committee board for listening to us. This is a far better motion than anything we've been presented up to this point. It, it does point out where the money is going to go, where the money is going to come from. And, and, and so it meets many of, of the concerns that I had. So do we have the motion on the table?
Just read.
I'm going, I'm going to, I'm, I, yeah.
Just take out the school building committee respectfully requests and say the board of finance.
The board of finance would, would request that the board of selectmen hold it. I'm going to change this slightly and I, and I'm going to explain why in just a moment. The board of selectmen hold a town meeting to appropriate sixty thousand dollars from the reserve fund. The project number zero four four zero four one for the school building committee consultants as previously approved by the voters at the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual town meeting. Funds will be utilized to hire consultants to assist the school building committee with the review of multiple options, including but not limited to renovation, addition or new school and any other items needed to assist the SBC, playing the charge of the SBC committee. And two things, one is.
For discussion.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the second, and, and to start off the discussion.
Yeah, we can take down screen share for now.
To start off the discussion, I, the, one of the most important things that I, I saw added to this, to what was said tonight was that the, the secretary and physician and, and some of these other physicians desperately need to be filled. And I, I can see where that, that's necessary as, as a previous committee chairman, the secretary is an invaluable part to the whatever operation we're running here. I know that there's a lot of objections to my going to sixty thousand from a hundred thousand. But I, I think that we can get a much greater support for it at sixty thousand. Also, I don't want to completely lose what leverage this committee has to make sure that our, our funds are being spent judiciously. And I'd like to point out that the hundred thousand dollars is, is, is a limit, not a goal. So that if we can, if we can start at sixty thousand, see if we can get there on that. And if not, have the board come back to us for the other forty. Also, the objection of having two town meetings, I, I think that that's not a hurdle that we can't overcome.
Thank you Pete, Matt?
Yeah, I think if, if the town meetings are, are a problem, we can, we can make it into smaller segments so that we don't have to go to town meeting. It's already been approved by the voters once at the annual town meeting. So we can just go in nineteen thousand dollar increments. And that's one, one option. Another thing, you know, I too think that this is a, a big step forward in the right direction and I'm appreciative. That's, that's really great, and I think the school building committee did listen. However, I have to say that I was very disappointed in the school building committee last night. I, I attended the meeting. That we, the, the subcommittee, the motion to establish a subcommittee for rebuilding and renovating Hall School as close to new as possible and adding new wings to the school and things like that was voted down. If there's one time when the school building committee could demonstrate that they want to take an even hand at this, you could have done that, and, and it didn't, and that's vote was not unanimous. So there was, there's, you know, we had some people on the school building committee that wanted to establish the subcommittee, that subcommittee, and we had other people who didn't. I think it would have been great, I don't know why that would happen. The school, the school building committee has had no problem establishing subcommittees in the past on communication, on land acquisition.
Matt?
I don't know why that would be, so.
As a point of how we're handling business, that's not a topic on our agenda. What, what subcommittees the school building committee is appointing is not a topic on our agenda.
Well, just would have demonstrated a lot more that they're going to take an even hand at this, which was, which was one of the reasons why the motion failed last time.
Christina?
I guess I would disagree with Matt on that. I think if they had created that subcommittee, they would need to create a subcommittee for every other possible outcome in every, every road. So I think that it actually is more fair. I think that when they do hire the consultant, that if they take a serious look at this and they involve Mr. Tulis in the in it, which I'm sure he will, make sure he is. I, I'm, I'm sure that they will explore that option. And I think, I, I, I'm very appreciative of the new wording, and I think that it would get us all where we need to be.
I. Jeff?
I'm just want to echo Peter's comments, and just a point of order, we got a second on this, right? Was that Christina? I couldn't hear in it.
I seconded it. I respect the comments by my esteemed colleague Peter Tanaka.
But you come from.
I do not agree with. That was the, here's the slap. Yeah. I do not agree with the sixty thousand number. I understand the reasoning for it, but I think it's just taking us right back to where we've been the last two months. The, there is accountability. We have a lawfully appointed committee that has a job and has a charge, and all the money is publicly tracked and recorded, how it's going to be spent. I think, I think the school building committee has, has done hard work to come back with something that is more amenable to the concerns that have been brought up, and I think it's time to move forward. And I, while I agree this particular board's job is to make prudent decisions with taxpayer funds, the taxpayers are very much involved in this process and they're encouraging us to move forward. And the impression I'm getting from the amount of people on this line tonight and the people who spoke and present to speak and the public conversations I've heard so far is the public wants us to move forward. They don't want us to keep hamstringing this process. And so I think I'm not in support of this, about to sixty thousand dollars. Stephanie?
Um, I agree, I think we should give them the full boat. I think that we are holding things up, we've already cost them sixty days at least. And failure to act on it or to get to agreement tonight would, would be ninety days, which is a quarter of a year, folks. And this isn't something that started yesterday. I think I don't, I didn't like the idea of, of just limiting it to two options when the, when the SBC hasn't even decided what options to limit it to. And the whole point is, they need this expertise to arrive at a decision about what are the most viable options for the town. We're trying to, we cannot, those of, those of, those, those people who feel like, you know, we should limit it now in the form of emotion, we just cannot do that. So that is hamstringing them, and they're already, I feel, I feel like they've already been enduring enough pain and in fact, have been in somewhat of a freeze in terms of moving forward despite very avid efforts and a smart group of people, and I think there's some frustration there. I just want to get out of their way, let them do their job, their charge is full, and it's a meaty charge. And just what I know of the committee and their work is that they're a bunch of smart people who are very passionate about several things. And I trust that they would not be spending this money willy nilly because we're in a town that has to stretch its dollars. So, you know, the, the more, the smarter they are about that, the more expertise we have. The options range from whether some of our existing sites are, are buildable still with an expansion and, and there's all, you know, Ralph Tulis was talking about a lot of things that would go into the, the discussion, and I think it's just too complicated to sit here on this end, a very early end in the process, and try to dictate what they should do and how they should spend the money. So I'm all for moving this, moving this ahead, this train needs to go to the next station.
Christina?
Can I ask a question? I, I guess it would be to Catherine. Would, is sixty thousand enough, or is even a hundred thousand enough? And do we, I, I think this goes back to the original hesitation I had last time, which is that we just don't know what this first step is going to cost. So if, if sixty thousand is enough, then, then that's great. But if it's going to be seventy five thousand, then we're going to be right back where we started from. If it's a hundred and ten thousand, we're also going to be right back here if, if we vote a hundred. So I guess that's, what, what do you, do you, do you think that sixty is enough to get everyone started and kind of help lay out what those next steps will be? And, and then I would add, we should probably even start thinking about what the CIP request for next year will be because that starts up in about a month, and we start that whole process. And in June, it's going to end up being in next year's budget. So that's just my advice.
Mike, can I respond? Thank you Christina for your question. You know that, that is a magic question, is it enough? I don't know, I don't know that any of us know, really. We're in the early stages of trying to get some traction of hiring professionals to help us. And, you know, it's, it's difficult to do that because as someone mentioned earlier, they're not free. These are experts in the field and we really need to tap into having them be a part of the committee and, and helping us understand the steps, the process, and just exploring the options and, and start, start some work, you know? So I, I don't know that a hundred is going to be enough, I don't know that sixty thousand is going to be enough. I don't know that twenty thousand is going to be enough. But what I do know is that this is the amount that was approved by the town, and it was approved some time ago, and that we'd like to be able to utilize those funds to do the items that we need to do as requested in the charge. Thank you.
Lisa?
Um, I just want to reiterate, you know, the town many years ago was challenged by the Sentinel Party for insinuating that the voters don't know what they're doing. And the voters needed to have things, you know, they couldn't, they, they couldn't gang parties together because the voters would get confused in the voting box. I think the question was pretty straightforward, and I think it's clear that the voters knew what they wanted when they voted yes to a hundred thousand dollars. It is not the board's place, the Board of Finance's place, to then take that money and dribble and drag it out. They are not the oversight. And the last part is that those on the board that are acting this way, good luck to any position that you wish to get voted on in the next election.
Any other board comments? Yeah. Stephanie?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Catherine, Catherine, do you have any clue? Do you guys have any clue what nine months of a project manager conceivably would cost? And I don't, I mean the outside number.
That's a great question. So it, as most of you probably know, it depends on what's in the scope, what's in the RFP. If we're asking them to do a certain set of tasks for us, that is going to dictate what the cost is going to be. I don't really know until we start defining the RFP. For what are we hiring them for? Well, we need them to help us establish some options, gather some information. They have the expertise, especially with the state process of the, the grants. They know the process inside and out, and they just did it in Mansfield. So it's something that we have to define what their scope is going to be. And then we can, we can come back and we can get a quote, certainly. we can, we can come back and we can get a quote certainly, but we need that RFP and, and they're going to help with that. So I, I don't really know, but you know, that's what we're hoping to understand better as we, as we develop the RFP and, and hire some people to help us with those things.
And would they, would part of that conceivably be that they would oversee subcontracting with architects and land surveyors and some of the other expertise that this cost would cover?
I think some of the consultants, we could go through the owner's project manager. I'm not sure that we would do that for every consultant. For example, the architect, that would be, I believe would be a contract between the town and the architect directly. And same with the contractor, it would be with the town. Usually the OPM is a, is a hired consultant of the town. They work for, I guess, us, you could say, as the town entity in the school building committee. So I, I see those as separate contracts. But there are some, like if we were to do any soil investigation or environmental studies on properties, you know, any kind of analysis, existing condition analysis on our town buildings, those would be some consultants that we could run through the owner's project manager. But, but they don't all fall under them.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
As, as, as much as I like Lisa threatening my position on this board, I fully disagree that, that we are not here for financial oversight of everything in this town. That it, it's only in the name of the board. And, and as this, what Stephanie's question, I pretty much agree that we don't know a lot of these things and what's in the RFP. And we won't find those out until we get them. And that's part of the reason I, I went with 60 instead of 100, is I want to see what's in that RFP before we approve the rest of the money. And, and there is no RFP without some money. So that's why I went with 60. I went with 60%.
Lisa?
Um, Peter, um, thank you for liking me. I appreciate that. However, I did not say that the Board of Finance was not oversight in the town or for the town. The Board of Finance is only there to approve the budgets that come forward and the boards that bring them forward. After that, it goes to the town. The town and the taxpayers in the town that wish to spend their money get to vote. They don't then get to vote and have Peter Tanaka tell them you can spend less. That's what I was talking about.
I, I thoroughly disagree. I think that we're here, we're not here to rubber stamp everything.
You know what, Peter? You can disagree. Good luck. Good luck.
Best judgment in our position. And if, if we're not here to make our best judgment, but merely to rubber stamp somebody else's decision, I don't see the purpose of the board.
Matt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I would be much more comfortable if we had, we've now asked if $100,000 was enough and, and the chair says, I don't know if it's enough. We don't have an RFP. We don't have any, any specifics about what's going to be doing, what's happening here. So we're, we're going to approve a motion for, you know, 60,000 or 100,000. And we have no idea whether or not that's going to be enough money to accomplish what we need to accomplish. You know, why don't we just stop casting, pointing fingers at each other, approve something that, that's okay, that they can get started with. I would ask Catherine, can you get started with $60,000? Is that enough?
Lisa?
Oh, sorry.
Whatever.
So Matt, some, some of your characterization, I think is a little bit of a mischaracterization of things. We've already asked Catherine a question. Of course she doesn't know if it's exactly enough money. I don't think it's, I think it's mischaracterizing it to say we don't know what they're going to spend it on. This has been discussed ad nauseam. We know the parameters. We don't know the exact details. Part of the reason we don't know what we're going to spend it on is, is until the process goes through and determines what it will cost, we don't know what the money will allow us to purchase. We also don't know to, even to this moment, how much money there's going to be, right? That's what we're discussing right now. Will it be 60 or will it be 100? Or will all the motions fail and it'll still be nothing? So in most times, I don't see this much distress over things like this. This is clearly a topic of great concern for people. It's certainly a hot topic right now. But we don't typically have this much distress over something. We say people have brought us a presentation, we quiz them about it, we decided it makes sense, especially if it's an appointed committee. We then say, okay, you can't spend anything the public doesn't know about, so we're going to send you on your way. We don't always give people everything they ask for, that's true. But we do typically trust committees to a certain extent to go on, move on and do their business. This is getting an extraordinary amount of discussion.
Erica?
Thank you, Mike. I, I spent some time listening to the board and I appreciate all of your comments. I'd ask you all, the Board of Selectmen received a petition from citizens. Although after further review, and I shared this with you, it's not something the Board of Selectmen can call a town meeting on. There's a process by which things need to be first through the Board of Finance and then on to the legislative body of the town, which is town meeting. And that's what this petition by residents, after two months of listening to the Board of Finance, felt frustrated and took to their right to petition, although we were not able to allow that town meeting. I'd like this board to hear, there was a petition by residents who were ready to talk about this in town meeting. There's no done vote in town meeting. There's no assumption that if this board moves forward with their recommendation, that it will be passed at town meeting. But you received a, a communication from me with a petition from citizens, that the legislative body of this town, which is voting residents, are ready to talk about this. And I'd like you to consider them when you're talking, when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Okay, more board discussion on the current motion.
Yeah, clarification. That's, the, the current motion is for $100,000 as specified by the school building committee and not Peter's? Or is it Peter's?
Oh, Peter made it a 60,000. That's the current motion on the floor. All right. Kelsey, can you take us to a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Okay, all of those in favor?
Follow each individual name.
So Jeff Prusak.
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 Yes.
Peter Tanaka.
Yes.
Stephanie Summers.
No.
Matt Clark.
Yes.
Christina Malos.
No.
And Mike.
No. So we have a tie vote, motion fails. Christina?
Can I make a motion, the same wording, but with $100,000?
Second.
We have a second.
And, and I just want the, the comment, the $100,000, if I remember correctly, is somewhat of an arbitrary number that we put in the CIP plan months and months ago, knowing that this would be coming. And I think that the original request was for even more than $100,000. And I think that we split it up over a couple of years. So the, the thinking behind it was the same thinking we're having now. And it's, the reality of it is that it isn't going to cost $60,000. So we might as well at least take, take this, this much for now, is, is my thinking.
I agree. Frankly, I don't, I feel like a, a project manager for a nine-month period or, you know, because that's what's left in this fiscal year is, that's a pretty big professional job. And that's why I was asking Catherine for that number. And I understand that she can't give it, you know, until all the details are done. It just, but I don't, I feel like we're, we're getting hitched up on trying to come up with, you know, new vague figures. And, you know, as if we're really in fear that this crazy committee is going to drive the car off the cliff and, you know, spend more than they should. And they're not going to say, hey, we got a project manager for 60,000. Now we can go on to some of the other expertise we know and, and go to the next step or whatever the number is. I just feel like we're, we're, we're getting hitched up with this idea of, you know, keeping our fingers clamped on the numbers. And I think we can be a little freer than that. A lot freer than that. This is, this is a big project and, and there's a lot in their charge. It's not just, do we build a new school? Do we renovate existing schools? And if so, which ones and where are they? It's also, what do you do with any buildings that are going to become empty? That's part of their charge. So that takes some expertise too. I just feel like we are just so slow walking this and let's have some trust in the people who are spending a lot of their time and have a lot of expertise. Our Board of Finance Chairman, Ralph Tullis, Peter Latenzick, a lot of people are out there, you know, Gary Anderson. I mean, I'm not going to name the whole committee, but I could because I see the expertise in all of them. And this is a hard thing and I, I'm, you know, in awe of the task ahead. I just think it's something that the people of Wellington want to solve. It's been discussed and studied and we've put, you know, we've got a 2017 study of facilities and recommendations. It's getting old. It's four years old now. Let's, let's move. This is not asking for more than is necessary to move ahead.
And we don't know what's necessary to move ahead because we have no, no budget. We have no, um, RFP that's developed and we have no proposal that's been, that's been developed. I think, you know, I, I sat in on every single meeting or I viewed every single meeting of school building committee on video. And the school building committee on the second meeting, they didn't even have a chairman yet. And they were already looking at land acquisition. I'm sorry, I don't, I, I, I view that as, as the wrong way to go about this. And I'm very concerned that if we approve the $400,000, the school building committee is going to revert back to a, a very one-track way, way of going about this. I'm, I'm very concerned. I fully support 60. I want to give $60,000 to the, to the school building committee right now to, to start their work. I don't think $100,000 is necessary. And.
Well, I think it's important for this group, as I, I repeat ad nauseam, to make prudent decisions about the taxpayers' money. When the committee of all those people say, we believe this is the right path, this is something that's been talked about in town for two years, the taxpayers have viewed this already, it's in the capital budget, the capital planning committee has viewed this already. I, I think we have to get past the idea of, well, I, I as in one individual person or you as one individual person feel like.
No, I.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's right, Mike.
Yeah, I don't think that's right at all. I've heard from lots of people who are very, very concerned.
Yeah, a, a clear reflection of what we're saying.
No, I was responding to Matt saying, he was saying, I don't think this is.
Right.
That this is okay. And what I'm saying is there's a lot of other people thinking about it too. And including all these people who are on the line who have spoken and present to speak tonight. I think, I think we have to understand that these committees have some, have some legitimacy to that and these groups that have all been involved in this before.
No, I, I'll rephrase. So I, I'm aware of this. There's a lot of concern in the town of Wellington amongst taxpayers about moving forward with, with this as the current, as the, as it's currently constructed. We, we're, we're moving forward with, without an RFP and without a, a proposal to vote on. And, you know, I, like I said, I've looked at it, all the different, going to every single meeting and I, and I've, I've watched them go through this. I'm dumbfounded sometimes how they could be operating this way. And they finally moved in the right direction, as I said earlier, earlier on. Thank you. Like, I'm very happy about that. We're moving in the right direction. This is a step forward. I would fully support $60,000 to, to the school building committee. I don't think it's appropriate to do $100,000 at this time.
I think that the way we.
Even though the taxpayers think it is appropriate?
Lisa, I just, Pete was speaking.
I, I think that now that we've, we've gotten through these three months, which have not been smooth or good, and I'm more than willing to, to say that, I think that, that second $40,000, once that RFP hits, should be very easy to get through. I, I just think that, that we need to be seeing some of these numbers and to see where we're, where we're getting into in the future. That's all.
I have a question of our business manager's table.
Yeah.
Can we put out an RFP that would potentially come in at $100,000? We don't have money allocated and appropriated on it?
Put out an RFP to see what.
And that we can't do it, we can't accept a bid on anything until we have appropriated money, correct?
So you.
I, I want, no, that's my question.
Great point, Erica.
I wanted to, I wanted to hear from the business manager, how that would work. Thank you.
All the questions.
Hang on, hang on a second. Lisa, you had wanted to speak before.
I already did. Thanks.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I was just going to build on, on what Erica said. So to extrapolate out, we couldn't accept an RFP for $110,000 either. Or 150 or 250. We couldn't, we couldn't move forward on any of those. But if we don't get an idea of at least where, where we're going, as far as money is concerned, I think that's, that becomes an issue of, of this committee.
I guess I'm not sure the difference between 60 or 100 in that case.
I'm, I'm just thinking 60, can you get an idea? 100, 100s, you know, you need $100,000 to find out how much you're going to spend?
Well, it feels arbitrary. It feels like it's the need to, to show that a cop has been made as opposed to if the 100 is really a magic number or the 60 is a magic number.
Well, the, the, the 40 is, the 40 difference is, is our ability just to add on right away. That's, that's all it is. And, and I know that it's not immediate, but I, this committee's had emergency meetings in the past and it takes.
That would not constitute an emergency.
Or not scheduled.
We could do, we could do a special meeting with.
Special meeting, I'm sorry.
Send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and they would call another town.
Right.
Stephanie?
I just want to point out that the, that the, the more conservative members on the school building committee voted in favor of this language and this figure of 100,000. And I think the school board, I think the school building committee coming to terms in its own very difficult process in, in recommending language is something that we should pay particular attention to. We can't just give it lip service and say, great that you guys did this, but we still don't think you deserve the 100,000. And I do feel like it's an arbitrary argument. You know, for you, for, for some, it's 60, for some, it's 100, which is what has already been approved. We're talking about appropriating it. And again, I don't believe that they're going to go, yay, write a check for 100,000 on the first bidder. I just, you know, I'm not seeing that. I'm not getting that.
No, no one's saying that. I'd like to call the question.
I think.
Okay, so we have to vote on the call, correct? So we'll do a roll call vote on calling the question. So just for clarity, this particular motion would stop discussion and make us vote then next on the main motion. Go ahead and call the vote for the call.
Jeff Prusak.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. So the motion passes to call the question, which means we now move without discussion to voting on the main motion. The main motion was the same motion as previous motion, but with the number restored to 100,000 that was sent in the original request from the school building committee.
Jeff?
Yes.
Peter?
You come back around to me.
Sure. Stephanie?
I'm sorry, can you repeat? But I just want to be sure what the motion is. I'm sorry, can you repeat? But I just want to be sure what the motion is.
It's Christina's motion. I believe Christina made the motion, correct?
For a hundred thousand.
The original language submitted the hundred thousand, yes.
Yes.
Matt.
Oh.
Christina.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Peter.
No. Or yes. So now motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The discussion is important. All right, um, next item, item three old business, school roof project. The board members have information, some of it came out pretty late. The board would welcome some comment from Mr. Stevens. I think you've talked about this before, but if you could just perhaps wrap a ball around it again.
So I, I shared out, I believe you've all seen the two-page. Timeline for the roof project. Is that correct? Did, did that make it out to everybody, Mike? Okay, so the two pages kind of goes through. And how we got to where we are. So, you know, the, the comments about what to do now. Um, and, and whether the, the roof is leaking. We've had the roof patched twice now. One was with money that was put forward by this board in March of twenty twenty. That was about sixteen thousand dollars that did the patching. Um, and then we recently put a couple thousand dollars into patching. Because we had some minor leaks at both schools. Um, and it is no longer, it has not been leaking, so through that month of rainy July, it has not been leaking. And one of the leaks that we thought was a leak at Center School turned out to be um condensation off of. Some ventilation pipes that were not insulated properly because we have to run our ventilation. The cancellation letter that came from Director Diamantis. Basically, eh, I, I think you have a copy of that as well. And it basically says, he will hold our, he canceled our application. And he will hold our application and allow us to resubmit. Once the School Building Committee determines if they're going to build new, if they're gonna renovate, if they're gonna add on, or if they're gonna do nothing. They do nothing. Um, I greatly appreciate his letter because he's allowing me to basically resubmit all the work. Without having to redo all that work.
Bring your screen share, just for, for the look, and this is the timeline that Mr. Stevens is talking about.
So basically now, um, with that cancellation. Um, and I know Donna and I have talked about this, um, try, just trying to figure out. Forward momentum and what to do now. Um, and again, I apologize, I wrote in my letter that I sent out to you. I was on vacation last. Meeting, I was not trying to ignore you. I was not in a position to answer questions. But the, this timeline, I hope speaks for itself. And now you needed to figure out. What to do with those funds because you were banking on the money that you were going to get back in reimbursement for other projects. So as a result of that, trying to use those. Ta, and I know Donna has a motion that she can speak to in a moment. I emailed Costa and just said, can you please tell me if they close this account? If they stop the funds, what would happen? Um, would we lose our ability to resubmit? And he said, no. So Donna has that motion. This, this process of, you know, putting these grant applications in is, is a big. Process. It takes a ton of hours, takes a ton of time, it takes a ton of people. Um, so. You, as a Board of Finance, really, um, I think can make a recommendation to the Board of Education. If you are looking for something specific, the Board of Ed had asked to put on. Uh, ten-year roof on Center School and the Patch Hall School at one point. That was not a desired outcome at that time. Um, and so. You don't have the funds to do the full project as it would be presented because you don't have the grant funding. Um, so Donna's motion um would basically be, and Donna, I don't want to steal your thunder, so. Um, would basically be to. Close the account and, and, and Donna, you can clarify if, if I say this wrong. Because i- if it's one point five, one point six million, the money that was going to be refunded would then then put, be put back into your offers. So you could do those other projects. It would maintain a CIP project line with the expected cost. Um, that it was going to cost the taxpayers around five hundred thousand dollars. It would remain in your CIP line. So that way, if you ever needed, if you, the School Building Committee says, no, nothing's gonna happen, we're gonna maintain our two schools. It is gonna be status quo, that you can then move back into that process. You would, basically, you have to allot the whole amount of money, um, the cost of the roofs for the grant process and then get reimbursed. So that would allow you to do that. The auditor is also saying, advising you to do the same thing. Your only other option is to do, uh, to suggest to the Board of Education, um, a different process. If you want to put a ten-year roof on, you don't get reimbursed, you don't go through the state, you just do it. Um, if you wanna um do, to, you know, recommend something like that to the Board of Education, I could uh bring that to them.
I just had a question for Phil. So is there, given that this, the School Building Committee process would take, you know. Some time and, you know, to figure all this out. So even if we could put the grant pro- proposal. On hold, ready to be in the holding queue and jet it out when that time comes. What about in the interim with all these heavy rains and everything? Is there something we can do? That is less costly because personally, I don't want to go into the game of the town. Incurring the hundred percent cost on fixing the roofs. That just seems uh way much to ask.
I mean, the, the. When we did the major repairs in March of, of twenty twenty. That was the result of snow blowers on the roof from years ago when we had those huge October storms. So town spent hour, three days on the roofs, um, patching those, those spots. The spots that they've recently patched are, were specific to where we were having issues. And the couple thousand dollars, which is what it was at both schools. Um, and we haven't had problems. You know, I'm the first one to say, look, and I don't like to see our buckets in our classrooms. Um, with, with rain pouring down, and that's why I said, we need to patch again. Um, and it is a reasonable solution for a period of time. When Scott Pelman did his presentation last night, and Donna and I talked about this, about timeline, what's realistic? Scott's presentation, if you bring an OPM on, um, is basically would allow you. If you moved at a reasonable pace, there would be potential by Ju- to apply. For either a renovation or a building project in June of twenty twenty-two. If you did not apply at that point, you would absolutely have plenty of time to apply by June of twenty twenty-three. That is the only time you can apply for a renovate to new or a new building. Projects like the roof, you can apply on a monthly basis. So our short-term. Solution of patching, I think, is the best you are going to get. Um, and it's gonna buy you some time. We monitor it constantly. Um, you know, when they put in new ceiling tiles to replace, we watch them. They're, they're looking at the same spots. Um, they're probably tired of hearing me say, did you have any leaks every time it rains? Um, and it's, we've been in good, good condition because of the patching we've done. Can I guarantee it's gonna hold? I cannot. But it's, you know, it's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Matt, you have a question?
That was that to me?
Yes, Matt.
Um, so I, I, um, two things. I was wondering if you could walk through that timeline a, a little bit. I, I read it. Um, there seemed to be a big, uh, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I, I, I was working today, so, and I came directly from work to this meeting. But it seems like there's a big gap there where, where nothing was going on. Maybe I'm wrong.
The pandemic time.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I can watch, walk through, like typically when you do roof projects, um, and Eo Smith just did one. Um, you do roof projects i- in the summertime when you, because you, you have to tear off the roof. That's a requirement of the grant. You can't do a roof over. So when you, um, these projects take months to apply for. For the grants. You have ten days in the first of the month.
Okay.
So when you approve this project in May of two thousand nineteen, there's no way you were gonna be able to put a roof on in the summer of two thousand nineteen.
Right.
The, that led up to the work we were doing and, and ready to be put in place for the summer of twenty twenty. And then the pandemic hit. And I will tell you, to do these roofs with, you have meeting after meeting after meeting. And everything paused. Um, so we were planning on applying in April. We were on track in. April of twenty twenty-two apply, um, and then COVID hit and everything stopped. The gap then picks back up in November of twenty twenty. And we were on track again to. I, I mean, we were, we already had our approval letter to put on this past summer.
Yeah.
And when Costa came out, the request of the School Building Committee to tour all school and Center School. Um, he said, oh, by the way, you have a roof project. Um, and he said, don't do any more work on it. And my jaw dropped and Eric was there and Catherine can verify this. And I said, what do you mean? He said, don't do anymore. I can't approve a project if you are in consideration of a renovation or a new building.
Yeah, see, that's what confuses me, Phil, because when he talked to the public. I seem to recall him saying, yes, you can, you can move forward with a roof project. It'll just be prorated. You'll have to pay us back. For the portion of the roofs where, where this thing, where this, these buildings are not being used as schools.
So when, when we, and, and Eric and I have talked to the state about this multiple times. That was what we thought was going to happen. We thought if, and, and they told us that this office of school construction. Told us that if you took seven years, you put a new roof on this summer. And then seven years from now, you opened a new building or you opened a renovated building and you combined. You would have to pay back the balance of that amount of money.
Yeah, prorated.
Prorated back, what was on the bond. That changed. I can't tell you why it's changed. He, he pulled that letter back and he has the power to do that. So I didn't tell him we were building a new building, that we were guaranteed that we were gonna renovate a building.
It just seems strange. It seems strange to me that we're getting two, two different stories. Um, and, and just. I, I don't know. I, I'm disappointed. I mean, I.
That's why he said it though, Matt. He said he didn't want the town to be up, to have to pay it back. That's why he canceled it.
Well, that's a decision for us to make, not for him to make.
He's the one, he's the majority stakeholder in the, the process. The state would be paying a million and we would be paying about five. So that's, I, I, listen. You look at that timeline, I'll, the fir-, I'm the first one to tell you, I would love to be done with this project and never talk about it ever again. And so when he pulled it, I, I'm, I'm thankful he at least is allowing us to reapply if we ever have to with the same documentation. Because we spent a lot of money and time on it. Um, it's been a frustrating process. But there's been a ton of hours and work put into this.
Right. So, so, I mean, if we, if we don't, if we, if we take costs as. Uh, and we don't move forward with anything to do with the roofs. And we continue to patch and we wait, it'll be three or four years before we have either a new school or, or a rebuilt school. One, one of the other. And then if it's a new school, we're gonna have an empty building with bad roots. Uh, two, two empty, I, I, I don't know. I, I, one I know of, maybe, maybe two with, with, with bad roots. And then we're not, we're not gonna be able to have the state pay for any of it. Not prorated, nothing.
That's exactly why he won't do it, Matt. Cause he doesn't want to pay for a, a roof on a building that's not gonna be a school.
Well, he said he would do it to pay for a roof on a building that is a school until it's not a school and then prorate the rest. And then he, then he changed, changed his mind and, and flipped around on us, so.
I can't change his letter. I don't know what to tell you. But you're right, eh, I mean, three or four years.
Are there, are our roofs, Phil, are our roofs, are our schools gonna last for three or four years?
I, I can't tell you that. I, I don't know that. I mean, might we have to patch again? Sure. I mean, we, we went, um. You know, a year and a half before we had to patch again. But for me, two thousand dollars was better than the cost. Uh, listen, I, I mean, you know, we always learn from what we. A- as we, as we get in new information, you learn from it, right?
Yeah.
If I had been maybe a little more forceful with the Board of Finance and said, look, it, you really need to put a ten-year roof on this. Because there's a chance that your grant could get shut down. Uh, maybe I should have done that because I, I was trying to get. And the Board of Ed a- agreed on this. They voted on this and, and for a request to put a ten-year roof on. For like eighty-five thousand onto Center School and just a Patch Hall to buy time. Time to see the process of the School Building Committee through, so that you didn't get stuck after having to pay something back.
Yeah, cause now, now, now we're stuck, you know. Can you put the other, the other letter up? Not this timeline, but the letter from Diamantis.
I'd just like to comment also on that conversation string, that we talk about the things that we don't know until later. That, looking back now was a mistake by the Board of Finance essentially, because we are the ones that said, no, we're not gonna give you the ten-year roof. We're gonna give you the ten thousand for the one repair and the seventeen thousand for the other repair, if I remember the numbers right. And, um, you're just gonna have to do that. So we did what we thought was the prudent thing at the time. By telling the Board of Ed and Superintendent Stevens, no, you can't have a hundred thousand. Or whatever the number was. I don't remember the number now, but you can't have the ten-year roof. Um, and we made a motion to approve instead the smaller number to do the uh repair. So we, we unknowingly played a part in this course of events later evolving.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I wish.
Wasn't the repair a hundred thousand dollars? Why does, why does that ring a bell in my head?
I think the ten-year roof was a hundred thousand, if I'm remembering right.
Yeah, I think it was like eighty-something, um, for the ten-year roof. And I think the patching was fifteen. I think the total. Cost of that would have been a hundred thousand. I think the cost to, um, and Donna, I don't know if you have this in, I, I don't have it in front of me. For whatever reason, sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars is sticking in my head as the cost for the patching that we did. Did I write that on my timeline? Yes.
One, one was.
Hundred dollars for the roof patching.
One school was like ten thousand, the other school was like seventeen thousand, so I think that's where.
No, no, total, Mike, total.
Total, okay.
I think the total was sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
And it, I mean, that, that's three days worth of patching. They were up for, for three days.
So, could we? Yeah, I mean, very disappointing. Is, is it possible that, that we could, that we could move forward with, with a ten-year roof now? And apply for, for this and tell Diamantis, listen, it's, it's, it's gonna be five years before in, in a, in a new or renovated school anyway. And, and you can prorate us, you can prorate us for, for half of it, um, you know, i- if we move forward with, with our plans.
So, no, you can do a ti- ten-year roof now, but you could not apply for a grant for it. Um, you always have to, and they are super strict about this. You can't do any of the work until everything is clear and, and approved. You have to put it, to, to qualify for um reimbursement, you have to meet all the criteria. Twenty-year roof. Um, it, it's, you know, all of the, the brick repointing that needs to be done so it doesn't leak. If you put a ten-year roof on right now, you would just be use, you could use or ra- request the Board of Ed. Make the recommendation that you put a ten-year roof on one or both of the buildings, honestly, if you wanted to. And then call it a wash until the School Building Committee is done. There's the, the, um, I, if I believe, if I remember correctly, one of the ten-year roofs had a, um. A warranty, one did not. Um, and then the other part of that is the big, the decrease in the cost, Matt, is it's not a tear-off. You're doing a roof over. So you won't know what's under.
Oh.
Underneath.
Oh. That's not good.
Correct.
I mean, it's just, it's just very disappointing because we're, we're gonna have two of the lar- largest assets in our town are, are, are not gonna be structurally sound moving forward. It's just very disappointing. So, and let's move on to the next. I mean, I don't have any more comments.
Um, so other questions? Uh, would board members like to review the motion that Donna suggested?
Yes.
Um, I think.
I wanna make the motion that we can hear it.
Do you have the language?
Donna, do you have the language in front of you? Don, do you have the language in front of you? All right, thank you, Donna. I'm gonna read it. For the, for the, okay, so it's this one right here.
If you allow me to share my screen, I have it on my screen.
Okay, stand by, that's coming.
That might make your life easier.
Have to allow him, yeah, the screen share.
Do we have to?
This is the email here.
Italics down, yeah, okay. Um, so. All right, so I'm gonna make the motion so we can discuss it. I moved to close up project zero four dash four zero three nine center school roof and project zero four dash four zero four zero hall school roof. Which were approved at the town meeting on March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one due to a loss of grant funding. So that's the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, I have a question for Donna on this.
Yes.
Based on the conversation we just had tonight, if there was a feeling, say, next month or whatever, uh, that we should pursue a, say a ten-year roof on one or the other or all, whatever it is. And, uh, we know that we're funding that ourselves because it's been clear we can't apply for the grant for that. Would, if we pass this motion tonight, does that stymie us in being able to do that? Do we have to start a new project or can we get access to this money again or?
You would need to come to the town for new appropriation for a new project. This, um, project, um, is defined in a motion for a full roof replacement at Hall School. So unless you're doing that, then you need to.
This motion is, would not be correct for that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, understood.
So instead of, Matt, so instead of, of moving forward with the motion to cancel these, can't, can't we, can we move forward with it, with a, is it possible for this committee to, to authorize tenure routes for both of those schools?
Well, it's irrelevant to this motion apparently because this, this motion is to cancel project that is defined and we can't use it. We can't use this project anyway. Oh, so if, if we were to move forward with a tenure roof, that was my question, but Donna, it would be a new process anyway.
Yes.
It, it would get a new project number that is not defined as being a full replacement and with grant funding.
We'd have to go to town meeting?
Yes.
Right, because this was, this project was approved by the taxpayers to be a full replacement with grant reimbursement.
Well, that's actually the way it's worded is, first, there's two questions. One was, do you approve this? And the other one was, do we still, do we allow filter to go for, to, to, uh, provide a grant for it? It's two separate questions. They approve both of them.
Yes, right. But the project is defined with the grant reimbursement.
Are you, are you talking about the voters approving two items? Because the two items were, the, the schools were separate on it, right? That's what I recall. We, there were two items on the referendum. One was for Hall. They have separate numbers, yeah.
As a grant reimbursement, they had to be two separate projects.
Right.
Right, and, and what Matt is referring to, and he's right, is that there's two separate groups of questions, I'm gonna say. The first question was about the amount of money for center school. The second question was about, um, allowing me to apply for the grant. The third question was for architectural, um, fees. I, I mean, there's a list of questions that you must ask exactly as it's worded for the grant process. And all of those questions were asked in two sets. Um, one for center school and one for Hall School. So you would have to do a brand-new town meeting with a new question, um, for if you wanted to do a different project.
Thank you.
And the other discussion on the motion. Okay, can I see what you call a vote, please? Jeff, are you there?
Sorry about that, yes.
Peter?
I, 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 I'm not, I'm not sure enough what's going on here, so I'm gonna abstain.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Anything else on the school roof project while we're on it? Um, ambulance service to the county union, this is just. I've been going back and forth, uh, as, as board members know, there was a discussion with the, um, first selectman of the county union where he said he would rather not meet with the full board of finance, so uh, I've been working on scheduling a smaller meeting. And that is, the scheduling process is still going on. I was away for eight days of vacation in the middle of it and stuff, so we, we will get that scheduled. And to have the discussion with the county union.
I have, I have one, one comment. If I remember correctly, when, when we were discussing that and there was a, uh, contingent from Willington One explaining to us why some of the ins and outs of that. I believe at some point, uh, Tyler told us that even if we weren't the primary response town, we would still be the primary responders because of the way that mutual aid works. Wouldn't the town who owns the primary responder certificate be their primary responder? No, 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 but every town is required to have a primary response certificate. Somebody, a PSA, and somebody's required to hold that PSA.
Right.
And currently we're holding it. If, if somebody else was holding it, wouldn't they be the primary responder if they're holding the primary?
What Tyler said is that the office of emergency medicine, if I'm using the correct terminology, all right, OEMS, emergency medical services, maybe. Um, they are, for obvious reasons, both to allow someone out of a PSA until there is a replacement. Um, so even if there were some ma- manner for the Willington One ambulance to get itself disconnected from the PSA, one of two things happened. Either they would be, continue to get called through mutual aid to cover or the state would have found another PSA holder.
Oh, it was my understanding from that, that conversation that it's the town's responsibility to find a holder for their PSA. Not the holder's responsibility. It's not like a hot potato where.
Yes.
Can't get rid of it, you know? It's their potato, they gotta.
I believe that's true, but I think this is similar to what we've talked about with the office of school construction. They have people who are, you know, commissioners and directors and stuff. And we would have to really ask them what their process would be. And they may have a process that says whoever's holding it right now is not allowed out of it until someone finds a new one. Um, you know, and I think, I think they're important questions, but we were trying to support Willington One. We were trying to su- support or, or clarify that we were not trying to cancel the service as much. We were trying to balance out the funding to be fairer to the taxpayers of Willington.
I, I was just trying to clarify what I heard. I, I, I agree with you, where it's not like we're looking to get out of this, it's just that we're looking to make sure that the, the town of Willington taxpayers aren't being taken advantage of.
Yes, agreed.
And I believe that, talking to people from way back when, when this was instituted, we were actually making out on it. And times change and, and incentives change and, and uh, insurance payoffs change and all that changes and it changes.
The gap spreads more and more and more every year.
Like this and now, then it got to zero and now we're costing, so. We, we've got, I, I think what we need to do is reflect that, that reality of change.
Right, understood. Any other board comments on this topic?
Mike, are, are you able to in this meeting, um, bring back the documentation and the discussion to us? It's, 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 so you're, so, so will it be an opportunity for all the board members to write to you what are questions? What we have in questions?
Well, I think all the board concerns have been very clearly stated throughout multiple meetings. That's what we will discuss in the meeting. Uh, I'll rip, and I'm gonna bring someone else from the board. I already told, um, selectman Eaton that uh, in fairness to all parties and in fairness to Willington One, their concern about me um, being involved because I'm a member of Willington Hill, that we should have one other member of the board of finance there. And even though he said he would meet with me alone for board of finance, I told him I was not going to do that. I was gonna bring one more person. Um, which he was fine with, he understood that. So, there'll be two members of the board of finance. We're not, we can't make a board of finance decision in that meeting. It's not a board of finance. So we will bring back a report to this board.
But, um, so then if we had a lot of discussion, is there a place where I can go to review what questions you're gonna bring? Cause I don't know if, uh, so is there a place where we can all review what you're bringing?
I think we're meaning to have a discussion and see, uh, and basically take forward the months and months of discussion from this board, that we already know what all those things are.
Oh, we do, we do know that we wanna know their rates and that we wanna know, um, the reimbursements that they're getting or not getting.
Conversation with the county union about the possibility of them providing some funding. This is not a conversation with Willington One about the rates that they're.
But it's the rates we get for the, the transportation we offer to a union. So I wanna know if the rates are covering those calls.
Yeah, that, that union isn't gonna know that. That's a question for Willington One and, and we can we already know that all of this, we already know that the reimbursement is only covering roughly twenty-five percent of the cost of the business.
We do?
We've talked about it multiple meetings.
I know, but do you really have, do we really have that information? I don't think we really have that information. I think that they keep that information to themselves. And I think it's important that Willington see what the reimbursements are so that we're not funding publicly a private ambulance company. We need to know that because if we contracted out with a private ambulance company, it would be a flat fee, but that's not the case here. We, we know they recoup their fees and then they come to us for fees. And so that's dicey. And that's what I wanna understand with this union relationship. Never mind the Willington side.
I, I think.
Otherwise, why would somebody go into it is the point. And I think that's the point we're bringing to union, that we wanna do good service for union, but it has to be compensated. And that, and you're not gonna get that unless you get numbers. That's what I'm saying. And since we're the board of finance, I think it, the numbers will tell a story, a very good one.
I think the numbers, I think there are reports available for the, what the reimbursements are coming from the billing service. It is a billing service that does according to the state rates.
And we can get that? All the board of finance members can see those?
Sure, we can ask Willington One for that.
Yeah, we should. Yeah.
I think that's a conversation with Willington One.
But Willington One is the one that covers union.
Yes, but the point is, this is the meeting with the county union to say we would like to talk to you about if you can provide some of this, uh, seventy-five percent that the taxpayers of Willington are covering.
Some of it? Or their portion of it comparatively to our wa- town of Willington?
Yes, it's, yes.
Okay. Which means that each resident in Union pays a lot more than each resident in Willington. Yes, because they have less, right? If you, so what I'm trying to say is, what I wanna know is, it's in this discussion that you have with Union, is there, is there still room for us to um, bring forward our questions?
I don't think that discussion is the place for us to ask about what the Medicare billing rates are and the state billing rates that go back to the ambulance. Because that's not the topic. The topic is, is the will, town of Union willing to discuss providing some of the gap.
What are you gonna say some is, though? How do you base what some should be unless you know the factual numbers that are coming in?
Just for the number, meeting after meeting after meeting. We know what the numbers, we know how many calls they do in Union. We know what percentage is being covered by billing right now. And so we can easily extrapolate a number. I have repeated that number in meeting after meeting.
Sorry, Mike, but when I'm, I guess what I'll get to, uh, is that if you write, if you, if you, if we, if Union had to go and pay for a private ambulance company, it would be probably close to half a million dollars a year. Probably somewhere, I'll make it somewhere three hundred and seventy-five thousand to five hundred thousand dollars a year. And we don't get anything. So how, what, what is, in this discussion, what is the number that will be brought back to Willington? That's what I'm saying. Cause you, if you go and you say, hey, can you just share the burden of the tech? Like, I wanted to know more about what this conversation will be prior to you going. Cause originally we were all gonna go. And I can appreciate the gentleman at Union, the selectman doesn't want to be in conversation with us all for fear, you know, if you watched any videos prior, who knows, right? But, my point is that I'm, I do understand what the price of an ambulance company costs. Multiple, I understand the reimbursement portion of it. And I wanna know what Willington in this meeting is really going to ask for. It's ju- seventy-five percent of, of their number or the number that we don't recoup? I mean, doing goodwill is one thing, but I don't think that the Willington taxpayers should be paying that, like Peter just said, Tanaka. It's not this private ambulance company that had, it has become and Willington should not be funded by the Willington tax dollars.
Right. So the, again, no decision can be made in that meeting. It's not a board of finance meeting. Conversation going with the first selectman and determine if we can find that forward. And, and the number that I would use is the same number we've discussed publicly. That he has, I'm sure, watched videos of the meetings. And that number, we have tried, Stephanie tried extrapolating some numbers too. We all came around to a roughly the same number. I think that we came to a number of somewhere around fifty thousand dollars.
Around fifty thousand, forty-eight to fifty thousand. And what that's based on, Lisa, is the, the uncovered, uh, the, you know, the, the amount of the ambulance service cost that's not covered by co-pays. So for the town of. How did you get to those co-pays?
We, we've, we have done this over and over and over in a meeting after meeting after meeting. We took the total cost of providing the service, which is like six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
But we might, we might in Willington be able to go out and privately get a contract with a, with an ambulance company for less. But that's not this conversation. That's right. I get it. I get supporting our ambulance company. What I'm asking for is what are the, what, what questions are you going to? Do we have an opportunity to ask you what questions you're going to have with this gentleman and what is gonna be the takeaway?
I answered this question like three times already. We're gonna go and try to get a conversation started. We're gonna talk about the exact same thing we've talked about in.
I don't think fifty thousand is enough. I, I don't, I don't think you have the numbers to base that fifty thousand on. I don't know where that came from. It's not clear from the last previous meetings. We threw around a lot of different things, but it's not really clear and concrete how you got to that number. There's no accounting. You haven't gone to the billing service. You don't know what actually each call is. So I'm a little unclear as to why we came to that number and what the takeaways from this meeting is gonna be.
Yes, there. May I make a suggestion? You please write an email to Mike with all your concerns?
If the board is okay with that, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any board member? There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for a solution. I tried. Any, anyone else on this topic?
Well, it's just, just for the, you know, for the viewership, but because some people may not remember the details of it. But we went basically from the net cost of the ambulance service to the town that we cover from taxpayer dollars is around four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, once you remove a few reimbursements, you know, uh, in, rev- revenue that comes in and things like that. And, um, so Union is about a tenth of the number of people. Their calls are about a tenth of the number of our, of Willington One's full number of ambulance calls. So we did simple math and we suggested that their contribution.
So we did simple math and we suggested that their contribution. By those, by those very simple math computations are would be around. Uh, forty-eight thousand to fifty thousand.
But the.
But I know, I know there's more detail, but I just want to say that's what. That's what the discussion was, but you're talking about the cost of running an ambulance service. Totally and all the things that feed into it, which is a lot more than the co-pays. You know, there's different, I I understand it's very complicated.
No, I'm saying that the portion that they should be paying for is more than just the use of the the, just the run. And more than the use of the copay. We in Wellington have to pay for the maintaining of those trucks. And they, so whatever, so like Wellington gets reimbursed from the state. And then Wellington comes to us for tax dollars as well. And we in Wellington aren't clear what the reimbursements to the Wellington Fire Department are. They've never shared it with us. So we don't know if they're taking in. Uh, any, we don't know the money that they're procuring at all. So we're basing it on what they wanted to show us. So it's not, that's where my concern is. And I've learned this more and more. Over the months that we've been sitting on this.
Right, but I'm saying the issue with Union, I think is is a smaller issue.
Porter, we're beating a dead horse here. We're not maintaining the agenda.
It doesn't matter. I'll send you my questions.
So please send me the questions because I do want to.
Thank you.
We're moving on. Um, reports of representatives to other committees. I think we've heard everything that's going on with this. I will add one brief comment to the school building committee. Um, the subcommittee. For land acquisition was discussed tonight in this meeting. It was discussed last night in the school building committee meeting. The land acquisition committee is meeting on the twenty-second and is going to. Uh, that meeting is purely for strategy to assure that it is not narrowed down to just the focus of buying land for a new school. Because we have heard the concerns that we're keeping all the options open. So that's the only other thing to add, I believe, to the. School building committee report. Um, who is our person assigned to the Board of Ed bargaining agreement?
I'm going to do the spell.
Matt, uh, do you have anything that you are allowed to report? The status, I believe I heard it's all resolved.
Uh, other than the one meeting, um, and I think uh Phil, Phil is still still here. Doesn't appear to be. So um, that's unfortunate. So I I last meeting of the Board of Finance, I reported that I thought the. Increase was somewhere in the threes. I don't remember. And there was one, the bottom one-third of the of the town, so. Um, and then, but I'm not sure exactly what the rate was. Well, we, other than that one meet, two meetings, um, that happened several months ago, there's been no movement on that at all.
I I I thought I heard that the contract was settled. Is that possible?
Don't, don't know. I have not participated in any other discussions on that topic.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, the town employee bargaining agreement.
I am the representative.
Can you tell me anything that is not violation of secret negotiations?
Yes, I can. There have been no meetings. Uh, Erica has done and Yoman's job of scheduling many meetings. At which point the Union has canceled many times at the last minute. So we have not yet had a meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Through the men's D C R frustration.
Yes.
Our team has met.
Our team has met.
Okay.
That's all we can tell you.
All right, any questions uh from the board for those three?
Oh, and nobody that during that meeting killed each other?
Okay, that's good.
I can, I can share that. We're all alive.
Okay, uh, new business treasurer's treasurer. Um, the treasurer's revenue report. Um, Laurie, are you still with us? Would you like to speak on this?
Oh, yes, I am still here. Um, it's actually a revenue and expenditure report. We've started doing it differently as of July first. And so there's a very brief section at the top that shows the revenue. And then the bottom section is the expenditure. Donna and I do this report together. We just felt it was more concise and. Uh, bigger, a better picture of the overall. You know, where we are with with money um by doing both the expenditures and the revenue together. And there's nothing that we have concerns about. Of course, we're early in the year. Um, property taxes were um. You know, the collection rate was good. Um. Any questions?
Oh, it didn't open.
It didn't open.
No. There you go.
Hang on, we're bringing it up on the screen, Laurie. So we can see it.
Thank you.
Here comes the screen chair.
Here comes.
There you go. Okay. Uh, so you're looking at the report there. Um, depending how your screen setup, you may have to drag the tiles around to move it off of the right column.
So the revenues, the the report that you used to give for me last year had all the details on the revenue. And uh, so the revenue is just that top section, but basically the overall property taxes intergovernmental, what's come in so far. Uh, licenses, fees and permits, investment income. And other revenues, so um. You know, it just, it gives you a a more concise snapshot of where our revenue is.
All right, any questions for our treasurer while she's on? Laurie, I'd like to let you know for your revenue stream, um, I miss um. I mistook some digits when I paid my car taxes and I owe twenty dollars and thirty-two cents, so I'm gonna get that in. So you can help fix things here.
All right, well, I'll I'll make sure that Janice comes after you.
Janice and I have already talked.
She must have gotten the color coded in.
Yep.
Letter in the mail.
Yep, twenty bucks out of a thousand dollars in car taxes.
Wow, you're a bad, bad boy.
That's the thirty-two cents is the interest. Yeah, yeah.
You have fifteen.
Okay. Um, thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
Next item, um, Assistant Business Manager position. Uh, this is an extension of the treasurer discussion we had earlier on. Um, as board members should remember, um, the uh. Erica's office and the board of selectmen have been working on revising some positions. Uh, to try to address concerns that have been brought up. Starting uh with the time when Diane Buick was uh in. The treasurer's position and then conversations that evolved from that about proper checks and balances and division of duties. So.
So the Board of Finance, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen, um, on our September eighth meeting approved the job description for an Assistant Business Manager. Um, which would um take away any of the general ledger duties. Um, from the treasurer's position. And um, put them on to the Assistant Business Manager. This would also allow for uh an additional. Um. Staff member in that office and there would be some coverage when someone's on vacation. For instance, um, currently we have a staff member on vacation, so Donna is doing. Um, her job as well as the accounts payable um to keep things up and running. Um, and so it gives some additional oversight there. So. The uh Assistant Business Manager's primary duties would handle the ambulance payroll and the ambulance accounts payable. The library um payroll as well as the library's accounts payable. Posting revenue in the general ledger, posting bank transfers to the treasurer and responsible for timely deposit of all monies received by the town and. Post revenue to the town's accounting system. In the event our payroll, our personnel coordinator is out on vacation or ill, um. The fact that this person would be handling payroll in the smaller subsets would give them the ability to know how to do payroll. For both the town and the Board of Education, so that there is um work to continue. And the same for A P. So for instance, this week Tish is on vacation. This person could then handle the A P um in that instance and um. What would happen is we would look at, uh, there would be a reduction. In salary from the current treasurer's stipend. Um, and then this added position. The proposed um. Forty-hour a week position for the assistant would um. Would be twenty-five sixty-seven per hour at step one and twenty or twenty-eight thirty um at step three. And the elected treasurer's stipend, which we would anticipate would be about five hours a week, would go down to six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars annually. Or roughly twenty-five uh sixty-seven per hour, but they are paid on a stipend, not on a per hour basis. So what this would mean compared to the budget that we currently have is we would need um approximately twenty thousand dollars at the highest step. If that were how we were to hire someone additional, um, Donna, I wish Donna, we're still here to speak to this. She believes from our salary savings. Um, that we could find the dollars. In uh the current budget, there would be no reason at this point to come back to this board for additional monies. And um, that at the end of the typical year, fiscal year, when she comes to you with transfers, she would be asking for transfers. Into that line item specifically. It would be needed by this board in order uh to do that, so. Um, we did tell you that when we had moved forward, we were bringing this information to you and the Board of Selectmen has. Um, after many months and looking at and making um tweaks to the job description. Um, with Donna's assistance landed on what we feel is a strong job description for an additional position. And we'd like to move forward with this course.
Um, I'll speak on it. I think. As best as I've been able to understand the duties, I think this, there's been a lot of work put into. Helping resolve some of the concerns previously brought up. I like the redundancy where people can work other jobs when necessary. So that things don't slow down or, uh, you know, like in any workplace, we've had employees get injured. And they're out of work for a while and you need someone else who has some cross-training and cross um. Tasks. So I think a lot of that has been worked on well in this and it seems that we are able to. Uh, fund it with current budget, which I think is a good thing um in this fiscal year. And so I'm feeling pretty favorable. Other board comments, discussion?
Uh, just, I just wanted to understand a little better. Is the twenty thousand the difference between what the treasurer's stipend plus the um? Uh, plus the assistant? Well, we don't have an assistant now. Is that correct?
That would be so some of the funds would come from the treasurer position and then there would be additional funds necessary.
And the additional is twenty thousand. Gotcha.
If they were at the highest base scale.
And what what's the work week for the assistant?
It would be a forty-hour work week.
Okay.
Current um setup for um the other three members of the finance office.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We're simply adding one full-time person to the to the accounting department, right?
That is correct.
And we're cutting back uh the responsibilities of the treasurer. From from statutes, is is any of this one a follow of the of the the? The Connecticut statutes defining the responsibilities of the treasurer and. Um, is is the treasurer have any legal, um, you know, uh, liability, liability that that?
Matt, all of the duties of the treasurer would still function. Our treasurer functions with more duties and they have a little bit of their hand in the general ledger and this would take that away. There are no real hours associated with that position because it is an elected position. So our treasurer is very diligent. She is here all the time. She could come in once a week for an hour. Um, or she could come once a month, you know, for a couple of hours if that's what it took to get the job done. Laurie is here, um. Just about full-time. Um, I'll let her speak to that. So this would really make it that elected position. They would um. Be responsible um for the the check and balance. And then there are, there are many, there are statutes specific to the treasurer. And this would still maintain all of those duties required by statute of the treasurer. Laurie, I think Laurie wanted to speak, Mike.
Yeah, Laurie.
I'm sorry, so um, I think that that Donna and Erica worked pretty clear carefully to make sure that. Um, the statutory requirements of the treasurer would still. Uh, be in the treasurer. But of one of our concerns, and it was my concern also, you know, I stepped forward to do this not because I was looking for a job, but because the town couldn't find anyone. It's a lot of work for somebody who's elected. And uh, my concern was that in the future. You could get someone in there who just refused to do the work and all those other things. And so. Um, I think it makes more sense and I I it allows me to go back to being more or less retired, you know, a few hours a week I can manage, you know, but. Assuming I'm re-elected, although that seems likely since no one's running against me, but uh.
Um, it was important for the Board of Selectmen that the treasurer positions stay an elected position. Um, and this maintained that as well as um separating the duties, which we have been hearing for many, many years. Uh, many first selectmen have heard this many uh years, our business manager through the auditors have heard the same thing and this, I I believe. Finally, um, covers all of those concerns that have been to us for, for, might I say, decades.
So Matt, just to clarify a little bit more, um, the treasurer is responsible for moving money. And investing money, so um, I would be responsible for making sure there's money in the accounts. But the new person, the Assistant Business Manager, would have access to those accounts, but not necessarily move the money. Um, and so we tried to separate that out. To where it really is us, you know, the statutory requirements and I would also continue to reconcile the bank accounts. Which seems to be one of the duties that make make sense.
I'm good. That that's very reassuring. Thank you.
Okay, um, do we need to be taking action?
So, no, um, when Donna and I spoke about this, because we typically do our transfers. She likes to do them once, short those accounts at the end. There would be no transfer now, uh, but we'd be coming to you for a transfer for a line item that, you know, currently, you know, we don't want to overspend. And when she can shore those up. Um, so when you see this in your bucket of transfers, um, however many they may be. Around the May timeframe, this will be one of them.
Do we need to do anything administratively to approve this or say we agree with it or anything? Or?
Um, technically, no, I think it's up to you whether or not, you know, um, choose to take action and and agree to move.
Well, if we don't, if we don't have a mandate to act on it, I would prefer we not act on. Enough stuff we're mandated to act on already. Um, I would just thank you to everyone who did the work of putting this together. I think it's forward progress for how we're doing.
I really want to thank Donna and Laurie, um, even they put a lot of time and effort into making sure that both departments, both the treasurer and um the business office were covered. In um, in the right way, in the correct oversight. So thank you to both of them.
Okay, uh, moving on. Correspondence, uh, anything um has been passed on to the board members? And um, we're back to present to speak. But we'll do the same, uh, we have a smaller crowd, but we'll do the same thing. If anyone um is in video. Please wave your hand. We'll call on you first and then we'll get to the people who don't have videos. And then we also, we can do raise hands to Ann Gresham.
Hi, I just, I don't want to keep you any longer than necessary, but I just want to thank you all very much for approving the money that it can go to the town. For a vote and we look forward to moving forward quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um. Jen Goodell.
Hi, um, I just have a question for primarily the folks who. Were interested in the sixty thousand versus a hundred thousand. Am I allowed to go back and ask questions about that?
Uh, typically, we can't re, we can't do business in this time, so we can't respond to questions really unless there's some sort of a technical error or something. But you can ask the question, we just can't answer it. If that's how.
Um, okay, well, I I'll just put it out there. I I. My question is, if if the hundred thousand dollars is allocated to this school building committee who has a very particular charge. if, if the hundred thousand dollars is allocated to this school building committee who has a very particular charge and hypothetically, they didn't spend the whole thing, when in reality, they'll probably spend more than that. But even if they did only spend sixty thousand dollars, I, I just want to know what the folks who voted for the sixty are thinking is gonna happen to the other forty. Like, I, I'm assuming it goes back to coffers if it doesn't get used. It's not gonna just sit there. I don't, I don't understand all this discussion about this amount of money. They're not gonna be taking trips to Cancun, I would imagine, that it's a very particular charge that this, this committee has. And I spent the entire meeting last night listening to the discussion about the procedure. And the majority of the meetings tonight, talking about the procedure, about this money that had already been allocated. And I'm, as someone who's participating in the meetings, I'm concerned that it's taking all of this time for procedural things.
Thank you. Other people in video, wave, raise your hand? Okay, anyone, Pete Litencich.
My apologies, I'm unmuted. Peter Litencich, ninety-seven, Trastoad. I want to address the issue of the school roofs. Um, I've been a three-year advocate visiting your board for this project and in strong support of it. I was quite surprised to hear the enthusiasm tonight for townspeople that approve projects, um, and meeting those requirements for funding, but virtually no discussion on the fact that this project was approved three times by townspeople and approved even when the cost increased. Um, and I would respectfully submit that the goal of this project, or even my own project, the school building committee, is not state reimbursement. The goal is a successful project. Have a successful K A school. In the case of roofs, we want roofs that don't leak. So I would strongly encourage this board to work with the other boards to pursue that, because the townspeople clearly indicated they want that done. If state funds are not available, then I suggest we proceed as a town to do what is necessary to secure our buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Melissa McKinnon, I see your little yellow hand is raised.
Yes, um, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much, uh, for approving the funds for the school building committee.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Uh, Sarah Reese.
I just wanted to express my gratitude that we're taking steps to move forward with our school buildings. Thank you.
Um, anyone else who is not in video, but would like to either raise the little yellow hand or unmute and call out your name? Please feel free. Catherine, are you trying to talk?
I am now, sorry. Um, I, I too want to thank the, uh, Board of Finance for, uh, taking the time to re- re-review our recommendation, uh, and for approving it. Um, I, I think this is gonna get some good traction, uh, with our building committee, so we can start investigating and looking at our options. So thank you. Um, secondly, I, I would like to echo Peter's, uh, concern and recommendation actually regarding, uh, the roof project, roof projects. And that while, uh, it, it's been, uh, the funding has been, I guess, put on hold or canceled and the Board of Finance is canceling the, uh, taking it off the, um, I, I'm not sure of the terminology, but it, but it was basically canceled off the line item. Um, I, I do recommend that somebody put a recommendation in place uh, to have at least a ten-year repair on the roof. Um, I, I'm not sure that it's a structural issue, but more of a leak and, uh, concern with the actual leaking of the roof. Uh, so, uh, I would recommend that somebody from the Board of Finance, uh, however it's done, uh, put something in there to at least get a ten-year roof and, uh, and, and bring that to a vote. Thank you.
Mike, wouldn't the policy be for that to come from the Board of Ed?
Yes. Um, other presidents to speak? Okay, uh, good welfare as usual. I'll thank everybody. And I'll thank everyone who's been on this for their patience with dealing with the technology. And, uh, that is it for good welfare.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, all those in favor? Say hi. Uh, looks like, uh, we have a majority. Good night, everyone. Thank you.